To order, it's now 7:00 PM. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board of Appeals on this day, on November 30th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which were brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts Zoning and Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio and video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary of Attorney presenting the case, to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. I'd like to have each Board member identify themselves.
Chris Murphy.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
David Nonowey.
Joe Beasley.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go to the first case.
All right, case number, excuse me, 2022 dash, excuse me, 2022 dash 26, 22 Ocean Ave LLC, being represented by attorney William Crowell. The property is located at 22 Ocean Ave, assesses map, 6B parcel L10 in the RH2 zoning district. The applicant is a special, seeks a special permit in the alternative variance to demolish, replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the zoning bylaws of Howard, Howard zoning bylaws 325, 52, and 54, Mass. General Law is 48, Section 6, and 10. This case has been continued since 7, 27, 22. The attorney is requesting to withdraw without prejudice this case, and Chair has indicated he is willing to waive the fees.
Okay, can I hear, make that a motion?
Okay.
Okay? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion to waive the fees and to postpone, what's the correct term for that, postpone the meeting?
Withdraw.
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 Withdraw without prejudice.
As long as we come back, Mr. Chairman, if I may, within a year, if you waive the filing, refiling fee, that would be appreciated. We're still in negotiations with your butler.
Okay. Okay. May we, motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Withdrawal is approved. Okay. Al, would I read the second case?
Case number 2022 dash 29, Jane C. Abboud, William Crowell Esquire representing the owners of the property located at 2327 Soundview Road, assesses map 26 parcel L10 dash 10, L1 dash 10, and parcel L1 dash 9 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks to amend a variant for the equivalent exchange. This is the original, 750 square feet of buildable upland to be changed to 640 square feet pursuant to the town zoning bylaw 325, 52, Mass. General Law 48, Section 10. This case was originally heard in 2020, and it was case number 2020 dash 54.
Okay. Now, there were no relevant reports from any department regarding this, and to assign voting for tonight on this case, actually, it'd be, it's all five of us. The Al, Dave Nonowey, Chris Murphy, Joe Beasley, and myself. And Attorney Crowell, would you please present the case?
Assuming it'll be all five of you on all the cases tonight, then?
Yes, unless Tim shows up.
Okay. Thank you. So I know we have a long agenda tonight, and trying to make it easier, speedier. This, this case was heard remotely during COVID in, on January 24, 2021, and the Board voted unanimously, five to zero, to grant a variance to exchange 750 square feet between two abutting lots. The lot owners have found that they don't need 750 square feet, they only need 640 square feet. So they've asked me to come in and petition this board to amend the variance, confirm it, and amend it to reduce the exchange of square footage to 640 square feet as per the plan that was submitted, but I also sent in a new plan two weeks ago, and the only change in that plan, Leach has had it, is the date of the plan. Everything else is exactly the same. In my narrative, I refer to it as dated July 12, 2022. The plan referenced should now, you should reference in your decision, November 7, 2022. That's the only change in the plan. And that's the 750 to 640 reduction is the only change in the variance request. I'm assuming that you do not want me to reiterate all of the arguments that were submitted and made pursuant to the original petition. Everything else remains the same. I have a letter to hand out.
Okay.
From, from the, one of the lot owners saying that, yes, they are in favor of this petition.
Is that from John Lyon, 25 Trout Road?
Yes.
Okay, I think we have that.
You have that?
Right.
And this petition, it's important, if I may, that it go through this evening, if you're inclined to vote in favor of it, because then we have a hearing in front of the planning board to have this plan approved so that we can record deeds before the end of the calendar year. It makes a big difference income tax-wise to the two lot owners.
I understand. Okay. Chair asked for members of the Board for their comments.
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
My only question was regarding that, the plan on November 7th, I actually thought it was dated July 12, 2022, but it's actually dated November 7th?
It was, because when Ryder and Wilcox went to submit it to the planning board.
Yep.
This month, they just changed the date of it from July 12 to November 7.
Okay.
So in your decision, if you could reference the November 7 plan that you now have a copy of.
Okay. Now, in looking at that plan, that's showing the 640 square feet now, not the seven, okay.
Correct.
That's, I didn't see a notation of square footage on the plan, and so I wasn't quite, just want to verify that that's what it is.
If you look at the little lots that are being swapped.
Yep.
They have arrows to them, they have the same lot numbers as they did originally, and they say now 640 square feet.
Okay, I gotta get my bigger glasses out.
I have a magnifying glass with me if you want.
Okay, no, we're all set, but I appreciate the support.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, that's my only question?
I have no questions.
Questions.
Okay. It, are there any comments or questions for anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this? Okay, please. And would you identify yourself and?
Michael Locke, Executive Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. I respectfully encourage your, your vote in favor this evening. There's a bigger picture altruistic result that can, that can come of this in that Paul and Jane, who have a home at 23 Soundview, abutting property, and John and Cheris, who have a home at 25 Troutbrook Road, that in combination own 27 Soundview, intend to donate the wooded parcel to Harwich Conservation. Partner nonprofit, the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts, which Harwich Conservation Trusts often works with to facilitate these land donations. So it is within the watershed to Red River. We know that's an estuary that's important for river herring, part of, one of only two ecologically functional river herring runs, the other one being the main herring river over in West Harwich, this one leading up to Skinnicutt Pond. So it's important for water quality, important for wildlife habitat, and important for those elements which really create a overall quality of life here in town. So I hope that you'll vote in favor. Thank you.
John, I didn't quite catch your last name, I apologize. John, I didn't.
Michael Locke.
Michael Locke, okay.
L-A-C-H.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who might be on, online? Okay. All right, here are no one else in public. All right, let's ask the ALB, any final comments?
I'm thinking.
Okay, I suppose we, like motion to close the, the public meeting?
Aye.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, the Chair now entertained discussion by the Board.
Straightforward.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, straightforward, it is.
Okay, all right. That being said, I'll ask for a motion from the other clerk.
Case number 2022 dash 29, the Board has, William Crowell Esquire is handling this particular one on 2327 Soundview, assesses map 26, excuse me, map number 26 parcel L-10 and parcel L-9 in the RM zoning district. The Board hereby grants the variance for the property.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm all set here, just, you go by this one.
Okay.
All right, read, I would, I would read that if you could.
All right. The case number 2022 dash 29, Jane Abboud, William D. Crowell Esquire, owner of the property located at 2223 Soundview, assesses map 26 parcel L1-10, parcel L1-9, the RM zoning district. The applicant requests to confirm and amend the variance on the case number 2020 dash 54, and has been granted by the Board, allowing the equivalent exchange of 750 feet buildable upland between the two subject lots to be changed from two 640 square feet pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325, 52, and MGL chapter 48, section 10. The amendment of this variance is granted and approved, subject to the following conditions.
Well, all conditions of case.
Right.
2020, 54 apply.
Right.
And then the final thing is a violation?
A violation, the terms and conditions of the variance may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL's chapter 48, section 7, and Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
If I may just.
Yes.
Make one suggestion. It's important that the, if you can, in the decision, to say you're confirming and amending.
We did.
Thank you.
If the ALB requests to confirm and amend the variance in case number, that's in the decision.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Joe. All right, any further discussion by the Board? Okay, only a vote, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved.
I just want to say, thank you for this. We appreciate it, John and I both do, and our wife, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thanks a lot.
That's one of the petitioners.
Okay, excellent.
Mr. Ayew.
The clerk would read the next case?
All right, case number 2022 dash, excuse me, dash 30, John Canducci, William Crowell Esquire representing, property is located at 32 Deer Run, assesses map 35 parcel PL-2 in an RM and CH-1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from the minimum lot size requirement and frontage pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325, 52, and MGL chapter 48, section 10.
Now, before proceeding, I live on Deer Run, though I'm not in a butler, adjacent a butler, I do feel I need to recuse myself, and give you the option, you'll still have four on the meeting. So that being the case, I'm going to leave as, as Chair for right now, and have Al take over. So he's, he's got everything right here, right?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
My pleasure.
All right. Case number 2022, 2022 dash 30, property owner of 32 Deer Run, I've already gone through all of this.
Okay.
All right, the floor is yours, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. I'm Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port, and seated with me is John Canducci. He and his wife Nancy own the property in question, and I tried to outline all the details of the history of this case in the narrative, so I hope you had a chance to look at it, look that over. I'll preface it by saying that, first of all, the location is on Deer Run, it also faces on Route 28 in South Harwich. If you're old enough, like I am, it's in the vicinity of what used to be the Red River Ice Plant, the old Red River Ice Plant, which I can remember my father taking me in as a young man, young boy, and they really had ice there, and you bought your ice back then in the 50s and 60s. In any event, the Canduccis find themselves in the unfortunate position of having owned the property for 14 years, and having paid $185,000 for the property, and approximately $28,000 in real estate taxes to the town of Harwich, and only to find out now that there's a technicality, so to speak, and that it's, we need a variance in order for it to be a buildable. So back in 2003, there was a septic design plan by Suits Engineering, dated July 28, '03, that was approved by the Board of Health on February 24, '06, permit number 06 dash 30, so a septic permit was issued. Fortunately, Robin Wilcox is no longer with us, he died six months to a year ago, so he can't testify as to what took place back then. But the assumption was made by both him and the town at that time that the lot was buildable for residential purposes, for single-family residential purposes, and the Board of Health even issued a deed restriction that was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, limiting any single-family residents to two bedrooms. And a first-floor plan was submitted at that time by Living Designs in August of '03. So the, and then the property was sold by the owner at that time, which was a building company, sold to the Canduccis. With the representation that this was a buildable lot, and everything from the town and the engineer and so forth indicated it was a buildable lot. So why isn't it? The subdivision plan that was approved by the planning board, back then, and I submitted copies of the minutes of the planning board with the petition, and that, those minutes indicated that the planning board approved unanimously a seven-lot subdivision, Moran Engineering, back then, submitted it, and seven lots were approved, and the minutes say all lots have the required area and frontage, and it was unanimously voted to approve that plan. Now, as it turns out, those lots are partially in the commercial zone, the CH1 zoning district, 200 feet back on either side of Route 28 is a commercial zone, and in the commercial zone, you only had to have 20,000 square feet of area and 100 feet of frontage, and those lots met those requirements. Further down in the zoning chart, it says that a residential dwelling has to have 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage, and that was the catch, that nobody caught that until now. So here, the Canduccis sit almost 200,000, over $200,000 later, 14 years hence, asking this Board for a variance from that requirement. So as I stated in my narrative, obviously, there was confusion by both the Board and the owner at that time, the owner prior to the Canduccis and then the Canduccis themselves, believing that this lot would be buildable for their retirement home, which they now would like to build, a single-family residence, as opposed to a commercial structure. And when you look at the subdivision plan and the assessors map, all the other lots in the immediate area that are 20,000 square feet have been built upon in that neck of the woods, Seepine Knoll, Uncle Vinnie's Road, Route 28, Red River Road, Deer Run, all of those that are half-acre lots like their lot have been built upon for single-family residential purposes, as best we can tell, and that leaves just this lot, which makes it unique, in my opinion, in that it's the one that hasn't been built upon that is similar to all of the others, and if it's not buildable, it would constitute a serious financial hardship to the Canduccis under the variance statute. I think the Board could grant a variance without substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, for the reasons I stated, that the other lots have been built upon. I don't think it would be devaluing other lots in the immediate neighborhood, in the same neighborhood, if it was built upon for a single-family residence. On the other hand, alternative commercial uses, if they could only use it for commercial purposes, would be a gas station, a parking garage, boat storage, auto repair, professional office space, retail sales, and the like. It would seem to me, given the residential character of that neighborhood, that it would be more of a devaluation to have a commercial use of that property as opposed to a single-family residential use. So I think that there would be no substantial detriment to the public good, and there would be no substantial derogation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, and the Canduccis definitely had, would have a financial hardship under the statute if the variance were not granted. So we asked that the Board grant the variance this evening, but before we go there, two other things. One, if you've tried to get surveyors, engineers, building, house designers, or anything to, anybody of that ilk to do anything in the last two years during COVID, when there's been this crush of real estate activity, it's impossible. Everybody's three to five months out. So we don't have, we didn't want to spend a lot of money on building plans, only to find out that the variance got denied. So what we're saying in our narrative is, and we submitted some, a sample of building plans, is that if the Board grants the variance, we will meet the 25-foot setback, and we will meet the 20-foot setbacks that are current setbacks required in that zone. If the Board varies the area requirement and the frontage requirement, the proposed dwelling, when they submit for the building permit, will meet those setbacks. Number one. Number two, in May of 2020, I had some other clients on Route 39 on the way to Stop &amp; Shop along there, and they had a very similar plight, and I had a conflict of interest on that case, so I sent them to Attorney Ben Zender in Orleans, and he came before this Board, very similar situation, and they needed an area requirement variance, and the Board granted that variance, I think with, without too much discussion, and I have a copy of that, I just wanted to hand it out to you, if I may. Thanks. Because I think this is a very similar case.
I would agree.
And that was for Mr. and Mrs. Tucci. If you've been by there, as I have, in the last two years, I've watched the progression of that house being built, I think it fits in very nicely with the neighborhood there. And in that case, the mistake was, or the catch was, that the surveyor had submitted the building permit application three days after the town changed the lot size requirement. So they were three days late, and that meant that two of the lots were built upon, but the third lot in the subdivision, which was this one, couldn't be built upon, they didn't catch it till two years ago. The other two should have been caught, weren't, got built upon, and now the third one was, is now been built upon because you granted a variance two years ago. So we're seeing the hardship, the technicality, the zoning technicality as being quite similar, and it's a residential neighborhood, and we're hoping that you can see fit to grant a similar variance for the Canduccis this evening. Thank you.
I have a letter here with, from a joining piece of property from Pasquale and Kristen Montnero, 30 Deer Run. That based upon the information presented in the application, they contest the variance and will continue to do so until they determine the variance will not impact their property rights. They had been contacted by Attorney Crowell's office and were told that some information would be available at this meeting, but unfortunately, they could not make the hearing. Just want to read that in for the record.
May I respond to that?
Certainly.
Sure. Yes, they did send me that email, and, or an email, and said, well, it looks like a three-bedroom house, and the town only allows two bedrooms. There's no question, we can only build two bedrooms. And they said, it looks like the house is 81 feet wide, that was a misunderstanding of the plans that we submitted, the, it was 61 feet, but regardless of what the plans show, as I said, we will meet the 20-foot setback, so we're going to squeeze that house to meet the setbacks if the Board grants the variance. So I responded. So I responded to the Montereros in that fashion, and I said, as stated in the narrative filed with the petitioner, petition, the petitioner understands that the house has to meet current front and side setbacks. Consequently, if the front and, front and lot size variances are granted, he will then submit a billing permit for a conforming house, including the number of bedrooms, and I will ask him to consider moving the septic per your request. And petitioners would like to have the house face Deer Run and not Route 28. And the abutter is asking to put the septic on the Route 28 side instead of the Deer Run side, and they will consider doing that. Thank you.
All right. A question has arisen relative to the dimensions, front dimensions on the property. The property seems to indicate that there is 115.9 on the 28th side and 115 on the street side.
Bear with me for a moment. And what are you looking at when you're? Coming up with those dimensions? I'm seeing 114.9.
Right.
On Route 28, and that was on the Sweater Engineering Plan back in '03.
But the frontage is represented as 115 feet, when the application actually says
Right, so we would need a variance from 150-foot requirement to whatever the actual frontage is for that lot. And a variance from the 40,000 square feet to the actual area, which is 20,465.
All right. The professionally drawn was revised in 2003, excuse me, in 7/28/03, which indicates a side yard setback is 15.99 and 16.08.
Right.
The hand-drawn indicates it's 20.
Correct.
Side yard.
Yes.
Which is it?
It will be 20 feet on both sides.
Okay.
If you grant the variance, the house plans will show 20 feet on both sides and 25 feet from roads.
All right. So the property is going to be a two-bedroom?
Yes.
No question about that.
That's up to the Board of Health to enforce, if you know.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with that.
And I might point out, if I may, that the folks that submitted the, the letter or email, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not immediate abutters to this lot. They're like two lots over, so they're not an immediate abutter.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Does there anybody in the public that have any questions or comments relative to this Okay, having said that, now, the board, do any members of the board, Mr. Murphy, do you have any questions relative to this?
Well, the, the planning board, when they approved this back in?
'08.
What was that?
It was '08, I think.
It was before then, right?
'03.
The initial planning board.
'03.
There's a '91 plan here that we have.
Right. So October 15th, 1991, the planning board approved the plan.
Is this the full plan that they approved? This is the one that the planning board approved?
Just verifying the date. Yes, October 15th, '91, that's the plan I submitted. That's the one they approved.
And on the, this property here, which fronts up, well, backs up, I guess, depending how you build it, 28, that is fully in the commercial area right now?
It's.
Oh, at the time?
Leave this out. 203 feet back from Route 28, so three feet of it is in, in the residential, but 200 feet of it, essentially all of it are in the, is in the commercial.
So you'd need a variance, both that, you would not need that?
You can build a single-family residence in the commercial.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the other lots that are shown here, the ones basing, as you come in on the right side there, do they have buildings on them, houses on those now? After that little round of the cul-de-sac area?
Everything's built on, the only lot that's not built on.
Because they are also in the commercial zone, right?
Yes, yes. And they got built upon.
And they got built upon, which I actually pointed out, it's very similar to the case we approved.
Yes.
Two years ago.
Right.
So everything in the neighborhood is very similar in size. Everything kind of was built, I'm assuming, after the date of, of this mistake or not, but.
Yes.
After the date of the approval, which is an approval from the planning board.
Right. So they went their merry way and said, okay, house.
And everyone built. And just like that last case, this one was not.
Right.
So it seems reasonable to me, so I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Nunnoli? No questions?
No questions.
No questions, I have no questions either. All right, the chairman asked to motion to, to close the public hearing. Anybody make the motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number 2022-30, John Canduci, represented by William D. Kroll, Howard's. The owner of the property at 32 Deer Run, assessor's map 35P1-2, and RM and CH1 zoning district. Applicant has been granted a variance for the minimum lot size requirements and the frontage pursuant to the Howard's Bylaw 32552, Mass. General Law 40A, Section 10, as the failure of the board may result, and grant will substantially be a hardship to the applicant. The board further finds there are no substantial detriments to the public good in the granting of the variance, and it, which granted, will not nullify or substantially segregate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. All work will be performed in accordance with the plan. During the life of the project, you, you have any idea when you might be able to start this? I understand, like Mr. Kroll says, that trying to find people is nearly impossible at this stage in the game. All right, during the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year.
You're hoping to start this spring, Mr. Donahue.
Okay.
Get the shell up.
Yeah, the property is located in a difficult area. Okay. Violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit, invariance may be enforced as a violation of Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, Howard's zoning bylaw, as may be amended from time to time. Okay.
Just remind the board before you vote that we need all four of you?
Yes. As you recognize, we only have four on the board right at this moment, so consequently, all four have to vote on this. If you want to get a, a poll regarding?
Certainly.
All right. So in order to give an indication relative to how the board will vote, are all in favor of this? Indicate by raising your hand. Okay. The board is going to vote.
We'll go ahead with the vote then, please.
Okay, certainly will. The motion is made, and the chairman asked, the vote individually will be. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So move carries.
Thank you very much. I think that's what this board is for in many respects, and appreciate your consideration.
Congratulations. Enjoy your new project.
That guy there on 39, he's done a pretty good job on that house.
It's a nice-looking house.
Yeah, usually nice job.
Okay. Al, if you would call the next case, I believe that would be for 10 Kings Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's clear some of this mess out of here. All right, case number 2022-31, William Little and Sandra Clementino. Did I get that pronunciation? Okay. Holtz, represented by Brian J. Hall Esquire. The owner of the property is located 10 Kings Road, assessor's map 42 parcel E1-19 in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from the minimum lot size requirements in the accessory dwelling unit pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 325-52 and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10.
Okay, thank you, Al. Just want to note the, there are no issues from any of the departments in the town except for the Board of Health. Okay, they just, just wrote the fact that the current sector system has a five-bedroom capacity, but the kitchen in the ADU triggers the requirement for two compartments, except the tank and two tanks in service, which I'm sure you folks are aware of, and just want to make that notation. So obviously, everyone here is voting in this particular case. That'll be Al, Dave, Chris, Joe, and myself, and Tim, I mean, and Joe. Like, have the representative introduce themselves and present the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Brian Wall, excuse my voice. I am an attorney, I have an office in Sandwich, and I represent the applicants in this particular matter, Mr. Little and his wife, I'm Mrs. Holtz. Excuse my voice, I don't know what's going on.
It's like a loss in Jersey, I have one.
I was fine until I came in here. Must have been all the rain outside. In any event, maybe the more I talk, it'll get smoother. So they are the owners of property at 10 Kings Road. I did submit a narrative explaining the reasons why we're asking for a variance. I will give a brief presentation tonight, given the fact that the agenda is long and it will essentially track the narrative. But I do want to say that Mr. Little and his wife are here, they're in the back of the room. I also have seen a number of neighbors from the neighborhood that I think are here in support of this application. In any event, by way of background, the applicants recently constructed a two-car garage adjacent to their existing home with some habitable space above. This was before COVID initially, it was going to be a game room, but plans have changed because circumstances in their life changed. COVID came, they decided that they would have Mrs. Holtz's elderly mother move into the space and live there with them, but she very unfortunately died of COVID during, during the pandemic. And then in 2021, Mr. Little, who was formerly a Chatham police officer, suffered a debilitating stroke. So the change, the plans for the space now have changed, and what they seek to do is to have an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, for two purposes, primarily to generate some income for the family, but also with the hope that they can get a tenant that is actually a CNA that will help Mr. Little with his circumstances. So they meet all, we believe they meet all the requirements for an ADU except for lot area. The lot is 12,478 square feet, and under your regulations, 20,000 feet is required. So we're seeking a variance to that provision. So the existing conditions at the property, the, the home is non-conforming because it's non-conforming to the side setback on one side, the easterly side, where it is 14.7 feet and 25 is required, 20 is required. The lot size is undersized for the neighborhood, 4,000 in the RR district, where 12,478 is required. And the frontage is also non-conforming, it's 130 or 150 feet is required. Single families are allowed as of right in the RR district, and ADUs are allowed as right in the RR district, as long as all the criteria in the bylaw at Section 325-14 can be met. We believe that we meet all those requirements except for the area, as I mentioned in my introduction. So with regard to a variance request, I know the board is familiar with the criteria in Section 10. The applicant must demonstrate a hardship due to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the lot, that the literal, literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve a hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant, and relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or derogating from the intent of the bylaw. And we believe that all three criteria are met in this particular instance. With regard to the shape of the lot, I did include a copy of the subdivision plan, and I included a copy of the site plan. And the shape of this lot is different. At some point in the recent past, a triangular shape, a triangular shape of land was added on to the westerly side of the property. And also, there are some soil conditions because the garage was originally intended to be actually attached to the house, but when they started to dig the foundation, the sand was a little bit out of my pay grade here, but it was called sugar sand, and the more that they dug, it rapidly went away from the house, and there was concern that the house would collapse. So the, the plan was changed to move the garage to a separate structure. With regard to the hardship, the bylaw and Chapter 48, Section 10 allow for financial hardship if the literal enforcement of the bylaw results in that. Production, it's really their life circumstances that have caused these hardships. Mr. Little was a police officer, he's no longer able to work because of the stroke. His wife was employed at the Spalding Hospital, and she left her job in order to care for Mr. Little, her husband, and as a result, they have had a substantial loss of income. But for the area of the lot, they would be able to have an ADU and generate some income from that rental property. And so it's the literal enforcement of the area requirement that causes them a severe financial hardship by not being able to have an ADU. With regard to public good and intent of the bylaw, our contention is, is that the relief can be granted without derogating from the bylaw, because the structure that is the garage complies with all setback requirements, meets building coverage and site coverage requirements, and thus, even though the lot is undersized, it's consistent with the neighborhood. And it's also, that, that relief can be granted because the view from the property and the structure are not going to change, and therefore, relief can be granted without derogating from the bylaw. Also, relief can be granted by promoting, the, the public good can be substantially promoted by the relief. In your bylaw, if you look at the purpose section of ADUs, and I'm just going to quote briefly, it says that "The purpose of the town adopting this bylaw is to increase the number of small dwelling units available in the town, increase the range of choice of housing accommodations, encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens, and encourage a more economic and energy-efficient use of the town's housing supply while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhoods." Granting this variance would allow this ADU, and it will promote all those purposes that the town had in mind when it adopted the ADU requirements or the ADU eligibility requirements. And finally, I was pleasant to be able to observe the proceeding before me where relief was granted, and I saw Attorney Kroll say that this is kind of what the board is all about, to kind of do the right thing in the right circumstances. and I saw Attorney Kroll say that this is kind of what the board is all about, to kind of do the right thing in the right circumstance. And this particular application presents the opportunity for the board to really help family that is in need without derogating from the bylaw and simultaneously promoting the purposes of the ADU. So, we would respectfully ask that the board grant the application.
Okay, thank you. Nothing would make this chair happier tonight if we could find a pathway for this approval. You know, I'd like to speak first, and then we can take it to Al.
Bring it to the public, too?
Yeah, I can. I think at first I can, well, actually, you're right. I apologize. So, thanks for the correction. That's why I say these things, to make sure. The, any additional comments at this point?
No, I'm available for questions. Mr. Little and his wife are here, and I, I think one or two of the neighbors do want to speak.
Excellent. Be happy to hear from them. So, who would like to speak to, in the public, to this application tonight? Is anybody here? Like to take a shot at the podium and appreciate that, and if you could just indicate your name and...
Sure, Peter Bernard, nine Prince Street. We are, my wife, Ann and I are in support. Unfortunately, Bill has had sort of a, you know, a very bad thing happen to him, and, you know, he needs help and he needs care. And he's been great to the community. He's been a police officer for many years, and I think it's good that we can get back to him a little bit. I live across the street. I see it every day. It's a beautiful structure. It fits the neighborhood. It's not, there's no, it's not detrimental in any way. So, I hope you guys, you know, I, I understand the bylaw, and I, I think that in this case, it's, would be best served to, to give him the variance that he needs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. All right, does anyone else who'd like to speak? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Al Bradley, and I'm at eight Kings Road, and I'm in support of this variance simply for the reason that I think we owe first responders a great debt to the community. Then Bill's been a big part of helping the community, Chatham, Harwich, and all over the Cape Cod. And I think if somebody else had spoken about the housing situation on the Cape as well, it would be helped through this variance. So, just want to say thank you, and I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to speak to this motion, the application? Okay, hearing none, I take your motion to close the public meeting. Okay?
Don't we have to give up the open meeting?
No, I'm just going to discuss the board next. Okay. Okay, discussion by the board. As I said, I'm hoping we can find a pathway, and there's more questions for you to, you know, to, for, at least for, for myself, not speaking as chair, but for myself, to find a reason to vote for approval of this tonight. Okay? I see the situation. I think the house, the location, I don't see where there's any judgment if there was an ADU over that garage, you know, physically. Unfortunately, I also have to look at the bylaws and instructions that are in front of us, you know, to, you know, grant any approval on any, any application. So, just some, like some reiteration from your attorney, if that's possible. So, according to MGL forty-eight, substantial hardship must be related to soil shape and topography of the land and structure, and not just be personal to the applicant. So, I'm... And, and also, it reviews that the financial hardship is an appropriate consideration, but it must be based on how the soil condition, shape, and property would affect any owner of the property, not just the person at hand. So, on the variance itself, which is, you know, there's a, a variance has a, you know, a higher level, you know, for approval. And I'm trying to relate the financial hardship and get that connected back to the, to the land itself and to the property. And not make it, and not make it personal, the fact that, I mean, I, I understand the situation here with this particular, this applicant and, and the health issues and, and the financial issues and the reason to do this thing. But we've got to make connection back to the, to the land itself. And regardless of the, of the, the health concerns of the applicant, it's going to be for anybody that would be in that house, how we can relate it back to, to the, to the conditions of the land. And I need some more help on that.
Okay, so, I gave two reasons in the application, in my presentation. I'll give a further one.
Could you, could you restate those again, just, just so I want to get this down and do as best we can for your applicant?
So, there's actually, I think that we have three, and I'll start with this. The ADU section of the bylaw is relatively new. I didn't look it up before I came here, but I think it was adopted two or three years ago. The subdivision is nineteen sixty-four. So, the lot size that was acceptable in nineteen sixty-four is smaller than is acceptable today. And when the ADU section went in, a decision was made that lot size of twenty thousand square feet we need in RR district. So, we have a hardship in the sense that there's the ability to have an ADU in Harwich, but you need twenty thousand square feet. And so, our lot is undersized, and that, that is the shape of the lot, and therefore, that's a hardship.
And, and just to, I'm going to just jump in, again, as, as I'm thinking here. To, to grant a variance, or, or in this case, in a way, it almost would be a special permit to go from twenty thousand down to the size of your lot, would create a new non-conformity, which, which under a special permit, we can't do, and create a new non-conformity. And, and the bylaw has been very, very specific here regarding what we can do on these, these requirements. So, if you could go on to the next point, I appreciate it.
So, a related point is, again, shape. So, in order to be able to, if you... Garage actually meets all of the applicable setbacks. And in order to do that, the Littles acquired the triangular piece of property that I mentioned from the neighbor. And that enabled the setback to be twenty, twenty-one point three where twenty is required. But the shape also changed. The lot shape changed from square to this kind of parallelogram, I guess I would say. And so, the lot is unusually shaped. It's undersized, as I mentioned earlier, because it's a nineteen sixty-four subdivision. Twelve thousand five hundred square feet was enough back in the sixties. Now, we need forty thousand. But the ADU requirement allows twenty. So, the hardship is related to the shape and size of the lot related to the applicant seeking to get the ADU. Let me rephrase it, said another way. Town recently enables all parties, in, in all citizens in Harwich... to promote all those interests that I mentioned earlier about the housing. But the Littles have a hardship because their lot, the shape of it and the size of it is undersized. And that deprives them of the ability to have the income from the apartment. And it's not personal to his stroke. It's related to the lot itself. The other reasons that I gave in my presentation are the shape because of that triangular piece of land that was added, and also the soil conditions, that there's this sugar sand on the property. And I, Mr. Bernard is actually a builder, and he could describe what that is. He explained it to me, actually.
Peter Bernard, nine Prince Street. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. I'm also a builder, and I'm familiar with the situation over there, having, you know, living across the street from the Littles. When the excavation commenced there for the addition, the, there's, there was an existing addition on the house, on the structure itself that was, was built on a poured slab. There's not, there's no footings there. There's not, it's literally on grade. It's a slab on grade. When the excavation started, because of the sugar sand, which is very fine light sand, it just washed out. And it became a structural issue with the existing addition there. There was concern about that thing, you know, breaking off, basically. So, the position of the garage, I believe, is very close to where it was intended to go, but there's no connector to the house. So, it became a detached structure at that point.
And I think I'm not concerned, at least myself and with the rest of the board, I'm not concerned that it is a detached structure. That's, I'm okay, personally, I'm okay with that.
Sure.
All right, and, and if, if we had the, some of the twenty thousand feet in the ADU requirements available, the fact that it was a detached garage at this point, given what you've described on the soil conditions and so forth, I'd be fine with that. Okay, so, that's, all right. I appreciate it, Mr. Bernard. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say one more thing, too, to try to make my argument more compelling. Just the process that happened before me, it appeared like there was an undersized lot that needed a variance in order to be buildable. And the argument was made that the applicant had a financial hardship because they purchased this lot and paid taxes on it. And if they didn't get the variance, there would be a financial hardship. Our argument is very similar. Because our lot is twelve thousand five hundred square feet, it's undersized with regard to the ADU requirement of twenty. And by not having the variance, he can't have the ADU. That's a financial hardship because the ADU can generate the income. It's not personal to Mr. Little's stroke or condition of being in a wheelchair. It, it's a condition of the lot.
I understand your point on the last case, and the, the problem was created before the current owner, when, when, when the lot was, was sold under the wrong conditions and approved by the town under the wrong conditions. So, it was, it was like a, in that case, it's relief from something that the applicant was, had nothing to do under his control. And that was one reason for why that would, would be approved. All right? Well, I'm going to pass to the rest of the board the moment, if you have any other comments. Chris?
I, I have the same problem you have. And the last case wasn't because of financial at all. It was because of precedent within that area. Other people had gone in and, and all the requirements that they, problems they had, other people had managed to get built. And then zoning changes are the changes, and it was, this, this lot was unfairly affected. But I understand your point. Problem on this one is the, the ADL zoning variance of zoning bylaw was put in with the twenty thousand square foot, I'm assuming not to have high density, obviously. So, this lot, this seems to me to be exactly the reason they put that in, unfortunately, in this case. I mean, it's, one of the things on the board is trying to follow the law as close as possible. And if there's errors, going back to the previous cases, if there's errors, you try to make those consistent. So, this one here, exactly the thing with Brian, that the problem is lot size. It has nothing to do with the shape of the property or detached garage or anything. It's a beautiful property. I mean, it'd be a perfect location for an accessory unit. But that lot size, we need to find a way to get that variance to fit under the, you know, the current zoning laws that state hands to us, and how do, how would a court approve a variance? If, if it went to the courts, what would they look at?
Al? I'm interested in the ground. The soil that this property sits on, or this garage, apparently is sand that can be extremely detrimental to building. And regardless of what's done with this property, that sand, that soil would remain a problem with putting anything else back in that, anywhere around either one of those two structures. The... If this was a strictly an accessory apartment, town requires twenty thousand square feet. We don't have, we have numerous lots the same size as this. Nineteen sixty-four was under a different zoning regulation. The zoning regulation for this property, I think, went back to nineteen seventy-six. Is where we go to forty thousand square feet. And some of the developments, and I know one in particular, that the development is ten thousand square feet. All the properties within that development. So, the tenants were back and forth over the years with regard to its zoning. I am unable to come up with a reasoning that can get around the requirement of the variance. And I know the variance, the language in it, which I had in here, because the language in the variance, and I know the court has ruled, is somewhat difficult to work with. Let's see. The court requires that the financial hardship ensure, to all the owners, the land, the courts require a financial hardship as a result of unique conditions, not merely to present the owner owing to the, based upon the circumstances, rather, which are directly affected, you have to bear with me, because I got this thing, this is pretty well messed up from being used, effective real estate upon six of the personal hardships. Now, the financial hardship is, I'm going to have to try to find the language again on this, is that...
May I, Mr. Don, you maybe try to answer what your question is?
Joe, go ahead.
So, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten essentially says, is due to circumstances relating to, and I'm going to just paraphrase, due to circumstances related to the shape or topography of the land, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve a hardship, financial or otherwise. And so, I feel like I'm not conveying my point effectively. What I'm saying is, is that when the town adopted the ADU bylaw to allow citizens of Harwich to develop an accessory apartment on their property for income purposes, they created the area requirement of twenty thousand. So, it's the shape or topography of the lot that's undersized. And it's the literal enforcement of the bylaw, of literally enforcing that twenty thousand foot requirement that creates a hardship because it prevents the property owner from being able to get the ADU. So, I'm trying to tie the financial hardship is the inability to get an apartment to generate income because of the shape of the lot, which is undersized. Be very candid with the board. There are three parts of the variance. There are three parts of the variance. There's the hardship, shape or topography part. There's the substantial detriment, public good. The argument on the shape is not the strongest argument. But I think that I've given the board something to hang its hat on. And I think you could say, and you could make findings to the effect that because of the undersized lot and the recently adopted ADU, there is a financial hardship to the property. And I would also argue that there are compelling arguments to you with regard to the detriment, derogating from the bylaw. The structure meets all the requirements. It meets lot coverage, site coverage, setbacks, et cetera. So there will be no derogation or detriment. And the public good is advanced because the purposes of the ADU are to create these housing options. And this apartment will do all of those things. And then there is the personal hardship that Mr. Little has. And the purpose of the bylaw will be very facilitated by helping somebody like him. So again, I think I've given you enough to hang your hat on in good faith. You could say there's a hardship. And again, focusing on the other parts of the variance, there's our compelling arguments for those parts. I think there's enough here to give the variance to Mr. Little.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things, if you go down to the campgrounds, for instance, this would be a big lot in the campgrounds, section of West Harwich. So they could use that same argument.
But I think... I see... very good point. But I think that every case is unique. And there, I think you could say that would derogate from the bylaw. Because what makes this case unique is that this structure that the ADU is in meets all the requirements.
Setbacks and all that, isn't it?
Setbacks and everything, and lot coverage. So I would... I think the point you were making would be that if you grant this, then someone from the campgrounds will come in and say, "Well, you gave it here, you should give it here." That's always the kind of case this board has to deal with, is distinctions. But in that... in this particular instance, I think you could say that what makes this unique is because the site coverage, lot coverage, and setbacks are all met. And that's probably not gonna happen in the campgrounds.
Sure, no.
There will be a limit to a point where someone coming in with an undersized lot, you will be able to draw the line in appropriate cases and say, "Okay, we get your hardship, but you've got a public good derogating from the bylaw problem." Where that's not our case here.
I'd like to add, commending neighbors for being in favor. Every time this comes forward for any town, it's typically not in my neighborhood or not my neighbor. So to that point, yes, these cases don't come up often. And this situation meets most of the setbacks, except for the site coverage plan. But usually they'll get shot down, whereas opposed, we have favor for it this time. So that would even shorten the amount of cases we might see for that. And in times past, when situations arise where we have opportunity to, you know, say, "This has been done in the past, we can't do it in the future." Somebody did it first in the past. This might be that instance where we set that standard based on whatever the situation is. Also, accessory dwelling units in the first place, few and far between. We have a huge need for housing. You see big houses going up that are high... very expensive and not supporting people, younger generations or older, to have another way of housing in Harwich or any town here. So I know that can't be fully considered as part of our decision, but something to keep in mind.
Dave?
I have no questions. For what it's worth, as a veteran who served overseas, I have a great deal of respect for anyone who puts a uniform on. So thank you. I commend you for that. From what we're given to work with, it's kinda tough to see how we could do this, especially with all the, you know, the potential and the cases we've looked at before where we've had to turn down. Seems like it'd be opening a door.
We actually turned down a case similar... very similar. It was a property... it was property size. It was the... all the other setbacks were fine, but it was the property size. We also have a thing where we don't trust it. And it's not... just because we did one doesn't mean we have to do the other.
Right. I understand.
There's many cases because of other circumstances.
Right. And that was the point I was making in response to your question, which is I think that if the board could see fit to grant this, you could, through findings, make this, you know, a unique situation where you could say, although it's undersized, this particular one, again, meets the building coverage and site coverage. And I keep harping on that because that's the ratio that keeps density in the neighborhood appropriate. And to your point about the campgrounds, you know, if someone comes in with too small of a lot, the board can at some point say that, "That's too small." In this particular instance, this lot is actually bigger than all the other lots in the neighborhood because of that addition. They're all about 10,000, and this is 12,500. And again, it meets all those other requirements. So I think that you could say that this is a rather unique situation where someone with an undersized lot actually can have an accessory dwelling unit without derogating from the bylaw, because everything else is met. And again, my hardship argument is that this ADU bylaw is relatively new. And so it created this right that didn't exist at the time that this lot was created. But a literal enforcement of the bylaw is depriving the property of that ability. And that's the hardship. That's the shape-topography argument.
Unfortunately, the ruling was put into place by the planning board recently, so... Is there any way we could put a limitation or a...
Well...
You know, this is only for this circumstance?
Yes, I would like to be able to find that...
Not be resold? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I don't...
I don't know if that's possible. I'm just trying to make this work, right?
First of all, if the property is built out and it's... Does the garage already now have the space overhead? Is it already set up as an apartment with a kitchen and a bathroom?
I'd have to ask Mr. Little that. It certainly is all finished.
Okay.
There might be some modifications that are required.
But my point is... my point is the fact that you put a restriction on it that this owner only... When the property's resold, you still now have an accessory dwelling unit. So it's... you have to...
How would you enforce it?
Right. Okay. All right. Attorney Hall, you've raised some interesting points here tonight that I think are worth pursuing. This is an unusual request to the board and to an applicant. And I think... and I... we haven't polled the board yet. And I don't know how the board's gonna vote, but I got a feeling we may not have a majority in your favor, okay? But you can certainly poll the board, as we did in a previous case. But because of some of the points that you raised, I feel that I'm inclined to request you, as the applicant, to request a continuance to the next meeting. And in that time, you know, I plan on presenting this situation to the town attorney and get their legal opinion if we... if your presentation on how a variance can be awarded in this case, if there's an agreement with our town attorney. And then we look at this matter again in the December meeting. Because I feel that you raised some points in trying to find a pathway to a variance here, which, you know, I'm not 100% on right at the moment. If I had to make an opinion tonight, you know, because one of the things on MGL indicates the fact that if the land structure can be used for reasonable purposes without a variance, there would seldom be a substantial hardship. And we already have a house on this lot. It's being used. So we're definitely down to the, you know, to the new rules and regulations of the accessory dwelling unit. We also, the town, does not have a planning board director on staff right now who normally would weigh in and give the board their opinion of how we could, you know, step forward. Because it's the planning board that designed...
When does the new guy start? So they just hired someone?
I don't know when he starts. But if it's an opportunity to get in and weigh in on this...
Yeah.
So I would like to, you know, look at... look at this further. Now, it's your call.
I'm happy to agree to a continuance.
Okay.
I mean, I can read the wind.
Yeah, I just...
I know the board is struggling with this.
I'm trying to find a pathway...
Yeah.
The board's trying to find a pathway to grant your applicant.
Right.
More time for research.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I feel, based upon the arguments you made tonight, some of them are compelling. I think that we need to take this boy to a higher authority in regarding legal opinion from the town and have this case reviewed by our town attorney for their opinion.
I'd be happy to request a continuance for that purpose. And if committed, I'd encapsulate those arguments in another letter, if that's okay?
What I'll do is I'll have our town secretary, the Board of Health, Board of Appeals secretary, contact you regarding that, okay?
Certainly.
All right. And I think, I'm sure that she has your phone numbers and information. So I'm just throwing that out here. Would the... I'd like to hear... I'm making a motion that we have this case continue to a future meeting. Perhaps it'll be December. It may be January, but December?
I think it might be January because...
Well, our next meeting is in December.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a December meeting. So right now, I'd like to have it continued to the December meeting, if we can. I won't be here myself in January, unfortunately. And I'm gonna make that motion. I'd like to have a second by the board.
Second.
Okay? All those in favor of granting a continuance in this case?
Aye.
Okay? All right. And I have a form here that I need to have you sign.
Yep. So I do appreciate and I thank the board for listening. See where it goes.
We'll get a file of the... you need to fill out the property information. And I didn't do that yet, of course. And I'll have our secretary will send you a copy of this tomorrow by email. I hope you see this as a way that our boy is trying to work with the applicant.
Absolutely.
One second here. Just gonna fill this out. Actually, I need to do this.
This is relatively recently filed, so I don't even think we have to do any labels or anything.
The only thing or change I made in this was I just put down, "I, Brian Hall, on behalf of W. Little," the petitioner.
Sure.
All right. So I'll have this faxed to you tomorrow, or emailed to you. And I'll do an email, which will be forwarded by the secretary to you, regarding my progress regarding contacting the town attorney. And if you have some additional arguments to make, the letter and so forth, and we'll... I'll discuss it with her and go from there. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just give me a second here to get organized.
Just gonna read this in for the record.
Okay.
Case number 2022-31. William Little and Sandra Clementine Holtz, represented by attorney Brian J. Hall, have been for the property located at 10 King Road, Parcel 42, Map 42, Parcel E1-19 in RR Zoning District. The applicant has been granted a continuance by the zoning board to a later date.
I believe his name is Attorney Wall.
Wall. I had down as Hall.
Right. That's a misprint. I've known him for many, many years.
Okay.
I'll take your word for it, yes.
Okay, I'm adjusting official document here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, every one of these has Hall on it.
Well, on the... this initial one, it says Wall.
Okay. Glad you turned any correctly.
Agenda.
Okay. Okay. Al, let's call the next case.
All right. Case number 2022-32, Walter V. Maloney III and Tracy C. Maloney, represented by attorney William Crowe. Owners of the property located at 135 Miles Street, Assessors Map, M14, Parcel J4 in the RM Zoning District. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative of variance to raise and replace non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325, 52, 54A and MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6 plus... and Section 10. There is correspondence from the Health Department as well as from a neighbor with regard to this.
I'm gonna hand out the correspondence from the neighbor unless you already have it.
Eric and Megan Anderson?
So voting in this case is Al, Dave, Chris, Joe, and myself.
Who's not voting?
No, it's everyone.
Everyone's here. It's voting. Just for the record, just...
Thank you.
And...
This is the one from Eric and Megan Anderson.
Could we perhaps read that later after I make my presentation?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Okay. Attorney Crowe?
Yes, Attorney William Crowe from Harwich Port. And I have seated here at my right Walter Maloney III. And he and his wife Tracy own the property at 135 Miles Street. So, the refreshing part, this is not a variance case. This is a special permit case. So you've had three variances in a row. Usually you have an abundance of special permits. So this should seem a little bit more familiar. Doesn't me, anyway. So we've been... the Malonys and I have been working on this case for over a year and a half to get it to the point that we have it now. And they're requesting a special permit to demolish and replace the existing single-family residence and detached garage, which is shown on the existing conditions plot plan by TS Land Surveying, Inc., dated September 10, 2021. And it shows you... shows that the detached garage is three and a half feet off of the Easterly Lot Line. And it shows you that the west side of the existing dwelling is 19.2 feet from the Westerly Lot Line, which makes it non-conforming. It's supposed to be 20 feet in that zone. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming... It's supposed to be twenty feet in that zone, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming, um, setback there, and a pre-existing non-conforming setback on the garage. Then if you go to the proposed conditions plot plan by a different surveyor, PJ F. and Associates, you see that we've moved the garage off of the lot line, off of the Eastley Lot, Easterly Lot Line where it was only three and a half feet, to twenty point one feet. So it's now a conforming setback on that garage. You don't see that too often in petitions that I file, to make it conforming in that, in that respect. And the porch will also be twenty point five feet, so it's conforming on the, on the east side now. On the westerly side, um, what we want to do, you'll see a, um, proposed addition that would be ten feet from the lot line. That's a sunroom, which is extremely important to Mrs. Maloney, to have that sunroom. And I have a letter from the abutter on that side, from the Ferreras, that I'd like to hand out to you, saying that they are very much in favor of that, um, addition. Have no problem with it, they've seen the plans. And their dwelling, as I understand it, is only ten feet from their lot line as well.
Okay, we didn't have this before.
And Mr. Maloney, um, is in the construction business. And we've shown on the, um, building and elevation plans, and on the proposed dwelling plan, uh, plot plan, a porch which also has a building code compliant roof over it, which connects the, the main dwelling, uh, through the porch, um, to the garage. And it's my understanding that that, um, that, that, that is a continuum, uh, it makes it all part of one single-family residence. There will be, um, uh, habitable space, living quarters over the garage. But it's all part of the single-family residence. We're not asking for any approval as an, as a accessory dwelling unit. Not asking to rent that space, it's all for the Maloney family.
Will that one over the garage have a kitchen?
Yes.
So it'll be a full apartment over the garage?
It would, you, you could look at it that way, but many houses have more than one kitchen. They have two kitchens, they have five bedrooms, um, that's what this is. Once you connect it with the porch, that's what this is, they're not asking for approval from you for, even if you could grant it for an accessory dwelling unit, I don't think they need it. And the correspondence from the Board of Health, that's a Board of Health matter, we'll address that with the Board of Health. But they're not asking, they, they know that the restriction is that they cannot rent that space. That is for family members, um, when they visit, et cetera. So, as I see it, this is a demolish and replace, and we're compliant with all the setbacks except for the, uh, westerly side that was already non-conforming with the Gale case, special permit from this board. The board in its discretion could grant, um, a special permit to construct the sunroom addition, which I indicate is very important to Mrs. Maloney and Mr. Maloney, but, um, the requirement is, uh, simply that, that addition, that intensity of that non-conformity under the Gale case would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, would not devalue the, the neighboring properties. And we have the abutter most affected saying all in favor of it. So, we would ask on, on that basis that you grant the special permit to demolish and replace this evening, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this matter? Okay. Okay. Would you ask the, starting yourself, any questions you have?
So just by making it one roof, it's just like a second kitchen. It's one building that happens to have a way, an out, outside way in between two pieces, the garage and, uh...
As long as it's building code, fire code compliant, it makes it all one structure. And I've run into that before with, um, a prior building commissioner on some property down in the, um, on Ocean Ave, not in the campgrounds as such, but closer to Lower County. And he said that's, that's what you need.
No, it makes sense, I was just making sure I understood that right. That was all I had.
David? Chris?
Uh, no questions. They only, I guess one. How do we, I mean, it, it's not an ADU. But it looks like an ADU, even the Board of Health, they, they're, they're confident it's an ADU. In their perspective. It has a back stair, so you could very easily access this.
I understand what you're saying, um, but we also know what the bylaw says, which is that we cannot rent it, um, to anyone. Period. So it's enforceable by the building commissioner as a violation of the, of the zoning bylaw. Now, it, down the line, if we wanted to rent it, then we'd have to come back to the appropriate board to order the building commissioner to seek permission for that.
No questions.
If it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. I got a problem with, I mean, all the explanations in the world. This place is gonna get rented.
No, that's, that's not what we're representing.
Oh, I understand, I completely understand that.
And that's not what the Malonies are sitting here before you saying.
To be honest, yep. We have, uh...
They've a larger family.
Yeah, I have three, uh, grown daughters with grandchildren and, um, dogs. And, uh, we can't use the house, really, right now, it's only two bedrooms. So, um, it's, when you come down, you know, it's gonna be another bedroom. No further questions?
Yeah, I'd, I'd looked at it myself as an ADU when I first saw the Health Department went back over it. But I understand your, your argument is compelling that this wouldn't be the, this wouldn't be the first house in town that has more than one kitchen.
Right.
You know, and I'm sure a lot of these kitchens have a room outside of it that people sleep in. Obviously, because it's over the garage, it, it, it makes it look more as an ADU type, type scenario. And perhaps in the future, should the town change the, the bylaws and the rules for an ADU, it may become rentable. But at this case, what you're saying here is that this is not gonna be rentable.
Put it right in as a restriction.
No, I understand, this, we can do that. The, uh...
If I may, there, there's plenty of houses that have two or more kitchens, you know, some of these McMansions. And you can have as many bedrooms as your septic system will allow.
I, I understand and I agree, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that point of view, you know, here in the case. The, um, I have more further questions?
Um, just one thing, I don't know the Malonies in any way. I, from my experience, I have family and friends that have a very similar setup to this. And when I go to visit with my daughter and my dog, it's nice to have my own kitchen, I'm not bothering them, I'm not in their space. They're still family, but I, just throwing that out there, I completely understand where he's coming from with this build.
I made the Malonies will have you over.
Only one dog, though. Trust me.
But conceptually, I get why they set it up this way, it's a vacation home, maybe, they come down to it, they can have family that have their own space as well.
There's a lot of these, I mean, we've, we've had a lot of these come before us. But proximity to other cases that may be similar makes you question.
Well, you also have neighbors who watchdog those types of things. Ha! They're renting. And they can run up to the town hall.
We did get one letter from someone that wasn't in support.
Did you want us to?
That was what they were concerned about.
Understood.
Yeah, no, that's, uh...
But I mean, the decision can't be based on letters from neighbors, a hundred percent, I mean, it's certainly a guiding thing, but...
Well, I guess, yes, the, the abutter's letter from, uh, Eric and Megan Anderson.
Do you want me to provide you a copy?
I think you should have a, why don't you give them a copy of it?
I got you.
Thanks. I understand that, um, but just like you're innocent until proven guilty in a court of law, that you should be presumed to be, uh, telling the truth to the board, and not, um, looked at as if you're not?
Uh, as I read it the first time going over this letter, one concern they had was the new position of the house and how from the second floor, looking out, you know, not having any, any obstructions as far as into their property, as far as on view. I don't know if there was any plans for how you're gonna handle fencing, if any changes. I, I didn't walk the back of the property, to tell you the truth. You know, it helped.
It currently is a, a solid stockade fence. It goes down the rear of the property. I believe to this, i-if. One eighteen Bank, um, that must be next to Mrs. Anderson.
This, this is, this is Anderson, this is Anderson. Eric and Megan Anderson.
That's, I think it's about a large house.
I'm thinking of Joe.
Yeah, it's not Joe.
It's a, that's a big property.
Yeah, she's on the other side. Yeah. So, but, um, the rear of my yard, abuts a property on Bank Street, probably this one, the very left corner. And then it abuts a property on Pleasant Street, the, the rear lot line. So there's a white solid vinyl, six-foot-high fence that
Sure.
separates my rear yard from the rear yard.
Also, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the abutter's letter talks about, um, building coverage and, and site coverage, yikes.
It's way off.
We're way under.
No, I, I, there's a lot of things that were.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna bring that to your attention, and, cause...
Can't please everybody.
Okay.
Everything's, is within the guidelines, so that's...
It's all within the guidelines except for the, uh, ten-foot, uh...
Well, on the Gale case, it could be within the guidelines if it's reasonable. That seems, that actually seems a little bit pushing it.
Well, but the, the grandfathered, um, setback, so to speak, is ten feet. So we advise the Malonies, don't try to go closer than ten feet, because they're not gonna want to be going closer than ten feet.
Did you state there, the neighbor that's okay with it, has theirs within the ten as well?
Theirs, theirs is ten feet off the lot line also. So you got twenty feet between the two houses, which is what you shoot for in most of the pre-existing non-conforming neighborhoods, that's what you have, is twenty feet.
Agree.
I, I can't say that I was concerned about the only going to ten-foot setback. I looked at, I spent a lot of time on the street, I looked at several of the houses, and there are several which are in that ten-foot or less side setback. So, you're having a ten-foot setback, it won't at all, I think, deteriorate the neighborhood, nor is it gonna be different from any, from many other houses in the neighborhood. Okay, any other comments from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay. I would choose to ask for a motion on the case by the clerk?
Terminated public?
I'd like to motion to close the, close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now, Al, you have a motion?
Uh, case number 2022 dash thirty-two, Walter V. Maloney III and Tracy C. Maloney, uh, by their attorney William Crowell, have been granted a special permit as owners of the property located at 135 Miles Street, excuse me, assessors map fourteen parcel J four in the R.M. zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit. Or, uh, no, period.
I'd like to amend that to say to raise and replace a non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Okay. So we're gonna, uh, there's gonna be a raise and, um,
Replace.
Replace a single-family dwelling. Pursuant to the bylaws of three twenty-five fifty-two dash fifty-four A and MGL chapter forty, A, section ten. I also have my...
I, I apologize to bring this up now, that's a busy area there, and I'm looking for the the date requirements, as well as, as best possible to keep equipment on the wall.
The special permit, the special permit conditions. The property isn't a congested area, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, new land to Labor Day of any year.
If I may, Mr. Chairperson, you interject, what if they could park everything off the street? There's a significant front yard there.
It's easy to me, you can get everyone to big yard.
So you're, Chris, would you agree the fact then that they can put everything on the property, that we don't have the date requirement? Is that what we were requesting here?
I mean, it would be, obviously, the only problem then is noise, but you certainly wouldn't have any problem with tra-
Traffic now, right now.
Parking, blocking the road or anything like that, I would think.
All right, I'll amend what I said, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. Here's a condition of this approval, that a violation of the terms and conditions of a special, this special permit may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter forty-eight, section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do we have a second? All right, Dave? Okay, any further discussion by the board?
Was it mentioned, did you mention the Gale case that, you mentioned that?
It wasn't even mentioned in the, the attorney's...
Yeah, it was. On, on this particular one.
In my narrative, I mentioned.
In your narrative.
Just wanna make sure, because we are, it is going to ten feet.
And I did mention it in my...
That's the rationale for going to ten feet versus nineteen point two.
In my presentation, I did mention it.
Okay. When we write up the notes, we'll mention the
Gale case.
The Gale case?
Yeah.
Is that okay, attorney, I will, in a minute, send in the thing here, put in for the Gale case? Okay. Okay. So, vote in the mo-
Aye.
Aye.
Full approval?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Crowell, it's about time, just now it's halftime in the Celtics game, they're up eight.
You're up eight?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Rest easier.
Did you put that restriction?
Just remember when the Red Sox
No, we did.
Made the World
He asked, he, he can't rent it without going for it.
Won the World Series. All the towns canceled all the board meetings when it was this seventh game, they just, nobody's gonna go, they all canceled.
Absolutely.
Board of Appeal, Plainway, everywhere, Kenneth, everybody, cut it down.
We can throw it up on there next time.
What year, what year was this, every, I guess it hasn't, hasn't been a seventh game in a while.
Right. No, this was when the Red Sox won it for the first time.
Being a Yankee fan, I would show up.
Okay. Yeah, Al, would you call the next, next, next meeting?
Yep.
Next, uh, case?
Case number 2022 dash thirty-three, the Sick Camp, how does that pronounced?
Sycamore.
Sycamore Inc., doing business as the Turn Inn, owner of the property located 91 Chase Assessors Map 4 Parcel F1 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or, in the alternative, a variance to convert the pre-existing non-conforming cottage from a three-bedroom, single unit to a two-bedroom, double unit pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw, Chapter 32552 and-54, MGL Chapter 6 and 10. And we have at least two letters from neighbors in support of this project.
Thank you. Of course, all five of us are assigned to this case for voting. Okay. Well, if the applicant would induce yourself and present your case?
Yep, thank you for the time. My name is John August. I am the president and principal shareholder of Sycamore Inc. By way of explanation, Sycamore is the initials of our grandchildren, and the only shareholders of the corporation are my wife and I. It was created with the express purpose of purchasing the Turn Inn two years ago. The Turn Inn is, by history, is operated as informal cottages and rooms up until pre-World War II, and in 1946 was formally opened as a bed and breakfast and is continuously operated since then, renaming itself the Turn Inn in 1965. The structure that's currently under consideration was built in 1938. The main reason for the special permit is that we are a non-conforming use in the RH1 district, although the property does have a non-conforming set off of six point, or the, the building has 6.1 feet from one of the property lines, but it has been that since 1938. It was last renovated in the 1970s. My wife and I are struggling or striving to keep the property in a state of good repair. The cottage is currently a 620 square foot interior. It is structured as a three-bedroom, one bath with a kitchen and a living area, so it is a pretty cramped, small little cottage. And quite honestly, it is not in demand by the modern traveler. It's empty about half the year. So what we are proposing to do is convert the interior of the cottage to a two-unit. Each of the units will be king suites with private baths and no kitchen in either of the units. So it's actually reducing the intensity of the use of the property. We are currently permitted for 19 bedrooms on our lodging house permit. This would reduce us to 19 bedrooms in the property. There's no expansion of the footprint, and with the exception of relocating a few windows and doors to facilitate the king suites, there's really no change to the exterior of the building. We don't believe it represents a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and in fact, we've had many letters of support and calls from our neighbors once they received the notice. And, you know, again, we were just trying to continue the tradition of the Turn Inn. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the permit.
Okay, well, thank you. It's, is there anyone else in the, here tonight, like to speak to this application? All righty. So it, that being the case, at the moment, it's a closed public hearing. We'll get our discussion. Oh, any kind of a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, Chris, in a second?
Same.
All right. All right, questions by the board? Actually, two.
I think it's pretty straightforward. No questions.
No questions. I don't have any questions. Al?
I'm just curious with regard to that. I met you when I was over there. Are you having a difficult time with employees?
In regards to staff housing or?
Housing.
Um, yes.
Now, is it your intention to rent that particular piece of property for guests? Or are you going to use that for employee?
It will be rented for guests.
Yes.
What we plan to do, typically, we have two J1 students in the summertime. Of course, there was difficulty the first year we were there getting any J1s. This past year, we had them in Stonehorses, which honestly was not that great of an experience for the students. As part of the property, there is a three-bedroom, two-bath owner's suite, and it's our intention next year to house our staff in.
Just curious about that.
No further questions?
I have no questions.
And I apologize that I closed the public hearing in the wrong order, but we'll chalk that one up. Okay. Before you hear a motion on the case. Okay.
Yep. All right, case number 2022-23, Sick Camp Inc., doing business as the Turn Inn. The board hereby grants a very, ah, excuse me, the board hereby grant, grant special permit. Actually, I had stuff in front of me. Having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaws of the Gale case, the as proposed project will not intensify, will intensify, will not intensify, actually, one or more existing nonconformities, will not create a new nonconformity, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than in existing structures. All the work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted to the application. All the work is going to be done on your property, I mean, as far as the construction. Yeah. All right. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not in any public street. It is a condition of this approval of this via, of that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions by the board? All right. I'd like to have a second on the motion. Okay, Joe? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Only because she showed up.
Yeah. She's in the media, Butters, across the street.
Thank you for your service and the gentleman on your right who came to my house and cooked eight times.
All right.
I'd like to cook.
Okay. Al, want to call in this case?
I really swear I could have gone with that. Never mind. 2022-34 Johansson S. Sherry Estrelato through their, through Warren R., excuse me, Walter R. Warren, 259 Great Western Road, Unit B, Howard's. The owners of the property is located at 20 Duke Bellum Accessory Road, rather, accessory map number 100 parcel Y2 in the RH zoning district. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a screen porch on a non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 32554 and the MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10.
Okay. Voting the case, it'd be Al, myself, Dave, Chris, and Joe. Okay, I'd like the applicant, douche yourselves and present your case.
Good evening. My name is Steve Bobol. I'm a co-owner of Sandala Customs, representing the Estrelatos. So here is a pre-existing 12-by-20 deck on the south side, I believe, of the property existing. Our proposal is to add a gable roofline with a screen slash poly panel sides so that we can just create that as a more useful space in inclement weather. It will remain unconditioned as a exterior living area. And then construct a new deck portion on the east side, which will remain uncovered. Currently, it's a pre-existing nonconformity, which we would not be in concern about. Actually, I believe in BSC's notation, it says construct a new deck for end screen room, but the existing deck structure is going to remain. So minimal work on it, other than adding to the footings, making it structurally supportive of a roof system. And that's about what you said.
Steve, I didn't, it's, I didn't catch your last name. Spell it for me.
B-O-B-O-L-A.
B-O-B?
O-L-A.
O-L-A, okay. And you're the contractor?
Correct.
And you have a company name?
Sandala Customs.
It's this one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. If I opened my page up, I would have known exactly what was going on. All right, questions for the board?
So, same deck, are you maybe replacing the deck boards if need be? Or is it really just the over, the top structure for it, bracing at the bottom?
The idea was to replace the existing five-quarter-by-six pressure-treated deck.
Yeah, keeping the framing and everything the same.
Correct.
No questions?
Now, the deck, when I was over there, I was a little, didn't quite understand where the deck was going to go with this desk. Deck is going to go on the parking lot, the new one, on the parking lot side of the property?
That's correct.
The stairs to go down towards the adjacent property across the street, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's actually.
Parallel, the new staircase will be parallel with the fireplace.
All right. How far, by the way, is that from the property next door? Any idea? I didn't see anything on my paperwork. I'm just curious.
Are we talking on the southerly side?
Yeah, on the, let's see, that would be.
Leave it south, yeah.
South, yeah. It would be the south side.
So the, the closest corner of that pre-existing deck, that nonconformity, I believe, is about 12.49, if I remember correctly, on that plan? On the plan, yeah. So, and then that, that property line skews further away.
Okay.
Lessening, lessening the nonconformity as it continues further on.
No further questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either. Is there anyone in the public that want to address us? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none to entertain a motion to close public hearing. Joe? Have a second? Dave? Any further discussion by the board members?
No.
Okay. All right, want to hear a motion on the case by the clerk?
All right, on case number 2022-34 Jonathan and Sherry Estorato through their representative, Walter R. Warren, they are the owners of 20 Duke Bellum Road, map 100 parcel Y2 in the RH zoning district. The board has moved, the, the board has moved to issue a special permit. It grants a special permit and found the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw of the Gale case. As proposed, the project will intensify one or more existing nonconformities, will not create any new nonconformities, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. The special permit is granted under the following conditions. That isn't, isn't a congested location, particularly for the people across the street. You going to be able to keep your equipment in that parking lot that's adjacent to the property?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So you're not going to be on the road? I mean, the road is about eight feet wide at most.
Yes, no, we can, we can keep it off the road.
Okay. Okay, there'll be no, okay, now, now, let's see. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. It is a condition of this approval that the violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violations of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
I have a second. The motion. Chris? Any further discussion? All right, I have, let's see, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
For branch.
Are you in the Army? How many years, Joe?
Six, really? You're a glutton for punishment. You're a glutton for punishment. I did my time too, so.
Okay. Alex, you calling this case?
All right. Case number. 22-35 Derek L. and Francine R. Tolman through their attorney, William Crowe. Owners of the property is a 17 Lewis Way Assessors Map 4 Parcel M4-7 in RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks special permit in the alternative, a variance, to construct a finished second floor on a nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 32552, Chapter and 54A, the MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10.
Okay. Attorney, you douche yourself?
Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Foot, and seated with me is Derek Tolman, one of the owners of the property in question, the 17 Lewis Way. We should be able to make 10 o'clock.
Easily.
I've been here at times when they said, okay, it's midnight, Mr. Crowe, do you want to make your presentation? I said, yes, let's go. So I think the 10 o'clock rule is good. In any event, what we're seeking to do, again, a special permit, not a, not a variance, is to remodel and reconfigure the first floor and add a new second floor to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family residence. So it's not a demolish and replace, it's, it's a renovate. The garage right now is an office. It's going to become a garage again, and then the habitable space will move upstairs on the second floor and will go the entire length of the, of the property over to the west side as well. So the, there will be no change in the footprint to the property. And there was, before I go much further, there was a, a further plan that I submitted to make some corrections to the one that was submitted with the petition. So you should have the plan by Terry Warner with the second revision of November 2nd, 2022. The lower right corner shows June 9 and then revised 12/21 and revised 11/2. Is that the one you all have?
That's the one I've got.
Yeah. Okay, that's the right one.
So June 9th, 2021 is the correct one.
And then two revisions below that?
Right.
Okay. So what this plan shows, and it's all incestuous on the Cape, so Terry Warner is my younger sister, and we brought her out of semi-retirement to revise this plan because she had drawn the plan in the first place. But there's no change in the footprint. So this plan correctly shows that on the west side, the southwest corner is 10.7 feet from the lot line, so it's pre-existing nonconformity. the southwest corner is ten point seven feet from the lot line, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming. The northeast corner, on the east side, is fifteen point four feet from the lot line, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming. They're both less than twenty feet. So this is a Gale case situation. We're now creating habitable space on the entire second floor, so it's going to be within twenty feet of the lot line on both sides. But we can, with the Gale case, intensify existing non-conformities, which you do quite often with these types of situations. And we're making the garage back into being a garage on the first floor with the habitable space on the second floor. So it all makes sense, um, with the new floor plan. And, um, the site coverage and the building coverage will remain conforming at, um, building coverage is twenty point two, thirty percent max. Site coverage twenty-eight point four, thirty-five percent max. Another twist you don't often see is with site coverage, it was non-conforming at thirty-seven point four. We're now making it conforming at twenty-eight point four, so we're making it better. Like we did with the garage on my, on the Miles Street one on my previous case. Uh, so site coverage and building coverage will, uh, be conforming. No change in the footprint, and we're looking to make habitable space on the second floor under the Gale case scenario, as I mentioned. So our argument is that there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if the board saw fit to grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't point out Sam Nicola, who came tonight, and she's, uh, with, um, Encore Construction, and she's their representative here this evening for the construction of the renovation.
All right, thank you. Okay. All righty. Chris, have you given questions?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions either?
This one is three kitchens. But they're small. Couple of hot plates.
No questions.
Okay. Now, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this case?
You know, I'm in a bar, I've never met the gentleman, but I, I approve it. I'm up on next, the next door, I'm the last one.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
And, uh, your name is, your name please?
I'm Enid.
Okay.
And I have one last comment, if I may. When you get to assuming that you see your way fit to granting the, the special permit, Mr. Tallman points out to me that when you look at the assessors' map, and you look at Lewis Way, it's actually a dirt road in front of his house that ends at the end of the next lot, even though it says it, looks like it goes on to Cody Lane, it stops there?
Yes. Yeah, there's actually a little barrier, so it's not through traffic.
There would be room to get, and Sam Nicola thinks you could get the construction vehicles on the lot. So we're looking to avoid the June thirty to Labor Day, uh, condition.
That was my next question.
It, it's not a thoroughfare there.
Number fifteen accesses through that same street though, right? Neighbor?
Which one is fifteen?
That's the one just past.
Other side of the road.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so they would have to get, be able to get by.
Yeah, we've already, you know.
Yes.
Is that the gentleman that just spoke?
No.
It does make a difference, big difference financially, to be able to continue with the construction during the summer. As you may know, as opposed to putting a halt to it all. Ah, all right. That I asked, uh, Mr. Tallman beforehand if they reside there, and, and the answer is yes. So they would be continuing to reside there.
We're renting apartment.
During the construction?
During the construction, so it would be additional money if I wasn't able to get the-
For rent for the apartment while they're not residing there, yes. Thank you.
All right, so, um, in this case here, seem to be able to keep all the construction vehicles parked on your property. Okay. Ask the clerk for a motion.
All right.
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, I did, I apologize. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to close public hearing.
Oh, aye.
Al, one second, by David. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Any further discussion? We're all set? Okay, now we can. Al, do you make a motion? Appreciate it.
Case number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, Derek L. and Francine R. Tallman, through their attorney, William Crowe. The owners of the property located seventeen Lewis Way, map four parcel M four dash seven and RH zoning, RH one zoning district. The board hereby grants a, um, special permit in this case, and have found the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case. As proposed, project will not intensify one or more existing non-conformities, will not create a new non-conformity, and will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All the work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. The special permit is granted subject to the following that the Lewis Way will not be blocked in any way, and the construction equipment will, um, be out of the way for whatever egress is being arranged for the neighbor. It is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Can I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Chris? Any further discussion by the board? Okay. All righty. Vote in the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for sticking it out tonight, gentlemen.
We have one more to y'all.
You're moving around pretty, you're moving around pretty well there.
Well, thanks. Very fortunate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm impressed.
I just had a, a good friend that, I was talking to him a couple of days ago, he was a week on oxy. That's how much I hurt him.
One Tylenol every eight hours so far. No oxy. Be careful on those stairs.
I was on, I was on drugs for a week.
Well, they give you a drug regimen for, for, um, a month, so I stuck to that.
Yeah.
But I found out that I was supposed to be taking two Tylenol every eight hours, and I was only taking one, and it didn't hurt, so I was, okay, bye.
Well, no, you don't, you know.
So you're practicing medicine without a license now. Nothing gets by Al.
Save the last one, it's gonna last for best, huh? The best will last right here?
Good evening. Should we just go into a vote?
Absolutely.
All right, case number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, John and Elaine Keenan, through their, uh, uh, through, through their representative, David, what's her?
Raquena.
Raquena.
Raquena, yeah.
One oh one Purchase Street, Southeastern. Property is located three Terry Lane, assessors' map, four parcel M five dash five in the RH one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct a finished second floor onto a non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, fifty-four and Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and ten. There is a, um, letter from my health department regarding the septic system, system, and the additional room. Have you got a copy of that?
No.
Yeah, the, uh, further board of health, current substance is designed for three bedrooms. You know, if you, I'll find it here myself, and the proposed plan indicates there will be a bonus room on the second floor. So that meets the definition of a bedroom created in a fourth bedroom. And so what they're saying here is that bonus room has to be constructed so that it has no privacy.
Yeah, it is an open bonus room.
Okay, if that's the case.
It is not a fourth bedroom.
If it's, if it's a pri, if it's, doesn't have any privacy-
Correct.
Then it's a bonus room. Okay?
By definition, the size of it.
Sure, yeah.
Do you want it? I can, you can have it.
If you want, please, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. As the rest of the meeting, I'd be myself, Al, Dave, Chris, and Joe voting.
Would you have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead, if you wish, resume your case.
So, uh, I'm Mr. Keenan's general contractor, David Raquena, Northeastern Trade Services Incorporated, out of Easton, Massachusetts. I have with me Mr. Keenan here, he's the homeowner since two thousand seventeen. We have a case before you today at three Terry Lane, that's incredibly similar to the last case you had. And, uh, what, what we have now is just a single-family ranch, and it is non-conforming on the rear lot line. It is an oddly shaped lot, um, although this is not a variance case, if it were a variance case, you could grant a variance in this case. But all we're requesting to do is add the second floor with no outward expansion at all. In fact, the existing rear deck that you see on the southern property line, I'll call it, it shows a five-foot rear setback there. That existing deck is actually going to go away, so we will actually be improving the situation as well. The fifteen-foot-three and the nine-foot-nine rear setbacks are not going to change. This improvement only goes up. Everything else on this property is conforming. The only non-conformities that we have on this, on this property are those rear lot lines. And if, if it were a standard-shaped lot, I, I don't think that would be an issue at all. That's all we really have, I think it's a pretty straightforward project.
Joe, you want to have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions.
I have no questions. And there's no one in the audience or online left standing to, uh, say anything, so we will, uh... Yeah, any additional things you want, you're all set, right?
Yeah, I will just add, we can easily put all of our construction vehicles on our job site, and we're at the end of a cul-de-sac, as you know, pretty private, no heavy traffic, no congestion.
But there is property across the street though.
There is a property across the street. All of our vehicles will be on, on our site.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to have a motion to close the public meeting.
Okay. Dave from twenty twenty-two-
We gotta close public meeting first.
Oh, yes.
Chris? Any kind of a second? All those in favor of closing this public meeting?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, now, we'll now, any further discussion, guys?
No.
Okay. Would you like to entertain a motion in the case?
Case number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, John and Elaine Keenan, through their, through their representative, David Raquena. Property is, the owners of the property is located at three Terry Lane, assessors' map, M four parcel M five dash six in RH one zoning district. The board moves to grant a special permit in this case and found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case. As the proposed project will intensify one or more of the existing non-conformities and will not create a new non-conformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted this application. We gotta put a restriction on this though, because, um...
Well, the life of the property-
Right.
-is dead.
All right. This permit is granted subject to the following conditions. During the life of the property, all construction vehicles shall be parked on and not on the property, and not on the public way. It's a street or road. It is a condition of this approval that the violation terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Can I have a second on that? Okay. Joe? Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Turn the vote in the motion, all those in favor?
Aye. Good luck.
Congratulations, we're all set.
Thank you all for being so efficient today. I honestly didn't think we were gonna make it.
I didn't either.
Oh, we got a call saying we may not be able to make it.
Yeah, I know.
Well, there's a tip jar on the way out, I just wanted to be there.
We're staff, thank you, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Get a lot of Marines in here today, huh? Not me, but, not gonna, were you?
No, Air Force.
Oh, Air Force, hey? All good? Well, do the same thing. Have a great night, all right, Mercers?
I just want to take a quick two minutes and go to the, go to the lab.
Take three.
Okay, so let's take a little quick break here.
Go right ahead, there's a lot to talk about.
Next year's schedule.
Is the meeting still, is it closed or are we open still?
Uh, we're open.
So I have time to go cook that lady dinner. So that took me off guard, I was like, oh, all right.
You should swing back tomorrow, just a second.
I know where she lives.
Kind of spooky, actually.
Right? When is our December meeting?
It's up at twenty-nine, I think.
It is twenty-eighth, right?
I got, I got it right here. In this mess, I gotta tell you something, I gotta learn how to organize this.
I'm here, I just want to make sure.
I won't be here.
I won't be working, working, but I'll be here.
You don't really have to explain that, you know, don't you?
Yeah, right.
All right, let me see, I had it in here someplace. I'll bet you I threw it out earlier today, because the time has passed. Let me take a, what, what does it say, you got the calendar right there?
Yeah. Are the, the one for the plan?
Uh, no, I mean for, for this meeting on, in December, you were saying that, uh...
The twenty-seventh is Tuesday.
Okay, so it's twenty-eighth then? That's the day of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-eighth, that's my mom's birthday. Oh shit, we're not doing anything, right? I hope I'm not doing anything.
So has everybody got their Christmas shopping done?
I don't have to do Christmas shopping, my wife does it all. All I have to shop for is her. And she doesn't like material things, so it's easy.
You got this all figured out, don't you?
Well, she's type A, not in type B, so it makes it real easy. She knows I won't, I won't buy any gifts, so she knows she has to.
Well, mother didn't raise a fool, apparently.
She did all right.
What a fine job you did this evening.
Yeah.
You sure? Well, appreciate that, guys. I...
Call it trial by fire.
I gather you guys were all in agreement with the direction I went regarding King's Road?
The continuance?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, I agree with it.
I was struggling with that one, but we can do with you as we all-
Morally, you take it one way, but it's like-
We could force the law.
Yeah.
I could find, I couldn't, I had my, all my stuff, it went through it all before.
Yeah.
And I was trying to find some loophole.
Right. Kinda like the next case that came forward. He's like, one roof.
Yeah.
We're good to go.
No, I, that's a...
Yeah, but that didn't matter.
No, yeah, I mean it wasn't-
You have an accessory apartment in your house.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to point out to him. I said, we're not worried about the fact they're not connected.
Yeah. It's locked eyes.
This accessory apartment is going to be a real problem.
Well, first of all...
I mean, the 20,000 square feet.
Yeah, there's very few... I mean, if we had, if, without being a variance that we can provide and if the attorney can say there's a reason why he can do it under, connect to the soil and everything else, I'm fine with that because then it's, it's solid in that, if we can find that case. That's why I said, you know what? I had some doubts. He raised some points and I felt there's a little bit of a long shot here, but let's-
We're allowed to talk about these things, right? I can't-
Yes, we're not closed. Meeting's not-
Yeah, the meeting's not closed.
Yeah, we're good.
We're still good. We're still open meeting. Still meeting.
Still open. You don't wanna say, shut that up. Ha, don't talk.
No, of course not. No, it's still open. The, but anyways, my next step will be, I will tomorrow make, start making arrangements to get the attorney involved, town attorney, and just get them to look at it and give us, give us an opinion.
Yeah.
So I'll spend a couple bucks to town-
There's a reason they put it in place so you didn't have, you know, 15 of these accessory units in the campground. All of a sudden, you got all these... No, it does say six months. You can't rent this other than Airbnb, you know? That is a requirement. It has to be six months.
Well, sure, but someone could be there for three months.
Somebody could come with a 10,000 square foot piece of property. Must have seen those two or three cases. And they wanna put an apartment above their garage for the family. For the bathroom. It's not an accessory apartment.
As long as they don't rent it out, they're fine. You, Jimmy Crowe was correct in saying there's not, he won't be the first house in Howard with a second kitchen.
So let me ask you this, and I don't know, I have not got the answer. Who enforces?
That's the thing, right?
Who enforces the ADU bylaw?
Well, the non-rental.
Yeah, the rental.
Oh, the rental piece specifically.
Do you have to register your property to rent it or just rent it out?
No, you can just rent it.
You don't need to register with anybody, right?
No.
They may have, I don't know if they changed the, now you have to pay a fee, a tax on it. I used to rent my house out before I moved on here.
You pay fees on renting it, but not on the property or anything like that? I mean, my parents have a couple-
At the time, I didn't have to, but I think they've changed that now. There's a, some sort of a...
We got a personal property tax before you moved down there full-time, right, from the house? I think you did.
Yeah, there was a very small tax, you know?
Right, yes. It was a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Right. If you didn't live here, it's charged a hundred bucks.
The town taxes you, right, on that rental? So you have to register in some way.
Not, no, they don't. They do now. I think they do now, but they passed a new law in the state, I believe. But prior to that, there was, there was not a, a...
It's the rental. It's like the entity you're renting through after they collect the tax.
You can do it independently.
Not the town.
But it's far the town, but they don't actually issue the bill.
Right.
We've seen with, it goes along with what we're talking about, chatter that's going through right now? With the properties that are being advertised, the three-bedroom, two or three-bedroom homes. And they're being advertised online. This is not new. This has been going on for years for 15 to 20 people.
They stuff three people in a row.
Yeah. And the septic systems, the, number one, the neighbors are screaming bloody murder because not many people in one place all summertime.
Revolving door.
Exactly right. And the town apparently has, if I read it correctly, they are, they're gonna go after these property owners because of the septic systems and the overuse of the septic systems. But they've been renting these things online. The scam has been going on for years when a property goes online and it rents to Dave, and then Dave finds somebody that's down there with his family. "I'm sorry, but this house was never rented to anybody." So I don't know how, you know, this whole thing can be a quagmire. But it is everywhere.
So, yeah. Anyways, I will start tomorrow to prepare, contact with the attorney to get this done and request a, and request an opinion.
I mean, you never see that many people in support of an ADU. Like, everyone's like, I mean, it's the same-
Support of anything.
It's the same with 40B. Every, 40Bs, all that stuff. It's, yes, totally want it, support it. Not next to my house, though, you know? And obviously, you know, they're good people because they have all the support that they got from their neighbors. But it's just like, what can we do, you know?
It was a tough one, right?
Hands are tied.
We're all sitting here saying, how can I make this work?
Right. Flipping through.
Yeah, I mean, I may have punted a little bit, but it is, it is an opportunity.
You didn't punt at all.
No.
You provided an opportunity.
I wanted to find, if there's an opportunity to do it, I wanted an attorney to let us know. Cause if we, if we, if, if we had passed that tonight without having a firm, firm reason why I'd call it a variance.
Well, you open yourself up.
Well, you would've had 1,200 more applications by, by next Tuesday.
I was talking with the sand.
Well, that, you had, you had something, you had something going there with the soft sand.
But I couldn't get myself to frame it in such a way that it might help the-
So if it was better sand, the property would be 20,000 square feet?
Right. Well, then creating some sort of variance or something that'll support, I don't know. Yeah. I was giving everyone a little more time.
Okay, so-
At least it was an effort.
Very funny.
Alright. Put them in a pile and each one with a spoon and see how much it falls.
Okay, I seem to have... I seem to have misplaced... There it is. Okay. Alright, so gentlemen, regarding minutes for last meeting, they have not been prepared yet. I, I did submit my draft in before, but...
What are you been doing?
Going, getting through it. I guess, at least I did, at least I also still have to, have to, have to review the tapes and make sure that I did the things correctly. So that didn't happen, so next meeting we'll have...
Did you want this back? This is a...
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna find I left a few things blank on it.
That's, that's fine. I was working on it too. I think I got it all.
Maybe that's one of mine.
That's, okay. So, next hearing, I mean, yeah, next meeting we'll have the minutes for both October and November. Okay? Alright, so in front of us here, I'm just pulling out for under, I don't believe there's any old business. Okay?
You sent something out, kinda old business. This was the, I think from Peter Gorey on Close Path.
Okay, that was from the, that was from October meeting.
Yeah, man, it was here.
Yeah, yeah, I remember the meeting, yeah, but it was in the packet. I was just wondering why.
Yeah, I saw that there too. I don't know how it ended up in this packet again. Okay, so...
Same thing with the zoning.
Yeah, that I, that I put, oh, I put that in for last month's packet, so I don't, for some reason, probably didn't get in there. I brought copies down for everybody for that, so it didn't get in there. So that, yeah. So I just made sure everyone had a copy of the zoning situation.
That first sentence of that is an absolute doozy. It's like nine or 10 lines long of that, that paper you gave us.
On zoning?
Yeah, the very first sentence is like nine or 10 lines long. I was like, that's a run-on.
A lot of commas, huh?
Yeah, a lot of commas.
Yeah, I mean, we keep referring to that, we keep referring to it, so I-
Three houses and two fours and the-
It's almost the bottom punch hole is where the first period is.
Since it always comes up under, under section 6 and 10 in all of our readings here, I wanted you guys to have a copy of it.
I know. I appreciate it. I was just saying, it's a whole line.
Yeah, I was looking at it saying 6 and 10, and then went back and I found it. I said, okay, I need to make sure everyone has a copy of 6 and 10. Alright, so old business is covered and a new business. In front of you, you've got your, I think your 23 meeting schedule. Now, in the past, at times, and we didn't do it this year either, there was just like one meeting between November and December. We just only did one. The way, the way the meetings are following, November 29th meeting is after Thanksgiving and the December 27th meeting is after Christmas. So it really doesn't have a real conflict unless someone disagrees that we need to arrange dates to have one meeting between November and December.
I mean, it spreads it out. I mean, tonight was a heavy night.
Yeah, I hate to think that, you know, we might as well. Does anyone have a problem with the hearing dates on this?
No.
There are two dates I know I won't be here for, but-
Yeah, what are those? Just so I have it. What are those?
Well, I won't be here in December, this upcoming meeting. And then February and July, I'm not available. I'm, I've already got commitments. And I'm not gonna be zooming in from New Zealand on the 22nd of February.
Okay. Alright, so you're out in February and you're out in July.
Right.
Okay. So you guys know, the first meeting in January, I won't be here. Okay? We talked about in December, but Al, do you wanna chair that meeting or you want me to?
Don't worry, I can do it. Everybody just remains patient.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I won't be here the January. I'm, I'm leaving on a trip two days later and I just don't wanna take a, take a chance. Okay. Any other further business? Alright, well, it's 9:43 and we will, I think, close the meeting. Alright?
Make a motion?
Make a motion to close the meeting. Chris? Any, can I have a second? Okay?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, for New Zealand, you going north or south?
Both.
Both?
Six weeks.
Meeting is closed.
Oh, nice. I-